Good evening, everyone. This is Michael O'Reilly, the chairman of the Town Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission. It is February the 18th, 2021. It is 7:05 PM. And I'm now opening the meeting. As you know, on March 14th, 2020, in response to COVID-19 pandemic and in effort to reduce the risk of transmission by virtue of attendance at public hearing, meeting Governor Lamont suspended in-person open meeting requirements. Notice here by giving that, given that this public meeting shall permit the public to view or listen anonymously, and when permitted, participate in real time, be recorded and posted to the town's website within seven days and be made available to the public within a reasonable amount of time. In addition to the standard parliamentary procedure as outlined on this agenda, the following special rules shall apply. Please mute your microphone when not speaking, so as to reduce background noise. Prior to speaking, on each occasion, each speaker shall clearly state their name and title for the record. The use of the chat feature is prohibited. I'm going to call the role, just indicate your presence. Bruno Maiene?
Here. Ryan Condon?
Here.
Robert Westland?
Present.
Ron Schneider? Dominic Panici?
Present.
Nicole Lupo?
Here.
Leon Ambrosi? Now, see Leon, did Leon talk to you, Rick?
I spoke to him yesterday. He was planning on attending.
All right, well, we should seat someone then. Ryan, who's next to be seated?
Just for the record, it was Ron would have been up next, but since he's not here, he gets skipped, so Dominic is seated.
All right, Dominic, thank you. We're going to have general public participation now. If there are any members of the public here tonight that would like to speak on a matter that is not before the Planning and Zoning Commission tonight?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Rick Schultz, present, Sarah in Georgia.
Oh, sorry, I missed you all. Once again, if there's any members of the public that would like to speak tonight about matters that are not before the commission, this would be your time to do that. There will be time later in the meeting during the public hearings for members of the public to speak regarding specific public hearings tonight. So are there any members of the public that would like to address the commission? Hearing none. Are there any members of the public that would like to just address the commission? Hearing none, we'll move ahead with our next item on the agenda, which is public hearings. First public hearing is SCP 2021-03, file number 1628A, 74 Enterprise Drive. This is continued from the February 4th, 2021 meeting. Rick, do you have any new exhibits?
Hey, Mike, Rick, I'm sorry. I think Leon has joined if we want to, if we want to put him in, but it's up to you guys, whatever you guys decide. I just saw his name pop up, pop up, and I just wanted to make an order there. That's all.
Are you with us, Leon?
Yep, Mike, I'm with you.
All right, then we'll seat Leon.
7:09.
Any new exhibits, Rick?
Mr. Chairman, no new exhibits. The Inland Wetlands Commission has approved the application, so the applicant probably will request the commission to close the hearing tonight.
All right, great. And who do we have to speak? 74 Enterprise Drive tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. It's Dave Bjorklund from SPAT Bjorklund Associates. Yes, at the last meeting of the Inland Wetlands Commission, we did approve the application. We are waiting for the letter, the draft.
Okay. Do you have anything else to say tonight, or do you want to close the hearing?
No, we're done with our presentation. All we were waiting for was the Wetlands Commission to approve the application. And I said verbally, or they took a vote, they approved it. At their next meeting, they will be presented with a draft letter of the approval and approve it. And then at your next meeting, you'll be able to move forward and approve it because you'll have a report from the Wetlands Commission.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bjorklund. Then we'll, if there are no questions from the commissioners or any comments from the members of the public, we'll hereby close that hearing.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I'm hearing correctly, we don't have a formal vote yet from the Wetlands Commission, so we cannot close the hearing. Dave, is that right? They are drafting an approval, but they have not voted?
No, we don't have it yet.
Yeah, I thought the way that this worked was that you just, you need, what you're waiting for is a report from the Wetlands Commission, and that doesn't require you to keep the hearing open.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I can confirm from the Wetlands agent today that the commission took action, and now they're just preparing the letter. So it is in order.
All right, then we will close here.
Thank you.
Moving on, number five is a text amendment, RAA 2021-01, file number 1015E, Last Mile Support Facility. We're opening this public hearing tonight. So Ryan, do you have the posting?
Yes. In accordance with CGS 8-7D, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, February 18th, 2021, at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter via go-to meeting or by phone. SEP, I'm sorry, RAA 2021-01, file number 1015E, Last Mile Support Facility Regulation Text Amendment Petition Application Amendments to 8.2.3 and 10.1, the existing commercial vehicle facility use to include it as a special exception permit use in the Industrial III, I-III district and supplemental additions, FSI Acquisitions LLC applicant, Gen IV LLC owner. Please check the town Monroe website for announcements and meeting cancellations. Notice was published in Voices. I don't actually have the dates of that, guys. But I assume it was published, Rick?
Yes, that was published last Wednesday and the previous Wednesday.
All right, perfect.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. And Rick, do you have the exhibits?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, exhibit number one, Regulation Amendment Petition Application. Number two, Regional Planning Agency Referral Notice. Number three, Adjacent Municipality Referral Notice. Number four, Western Council of Governments Referral Response, no comment. Number five, Norfolk Valley Council of Government Referral Response, no comment. Six, ART Town Planner. That is all.
Thank you, Rick. And for the applicant tonight?
Evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is John Huff. I'm going to attorney with an office at 147 Broad Street in Milford, and I'm here tonight on behalf of FSI Acquisitions LLC. They are the contract purchaser of the property at 10 Victoria Drive. As you noted, there's two applications on your agenda this evening. You're going to hear one of them. The first is the application to amend the zoning regulations to make commercial vehicle facilities a special permit use in the I-III zone. There's also on your agenda, which you're not going to hear tonight, is a special exception application to locate a commercial vehicle facility on the property at 10 Victoria Drive. But because we had an issue with the mail notices to our neighbors, we can't open that public hearing on a special permit, on a special exception application. So we want to make sure that everyone is properly notified, and we will send new notices to all the neighbors so we can open that hearing on March 4th. Nevertheless, we certainly expect that we can have a productive conversation with the commission this evening with regard to the regulation change. And we respect that this hearing will be continued until the 4th, so they can hear, continue to hear the regulation change application at the same time as you hear the special exception application. And so if there are any neighbors watching, I just want to make it clear, first my apology, that we can't get to the special exception application this evening. We can only talk about the regulation amendments. But we'll be talking in depth about the special exception application and the site plan on 10 Victoria at the meeting on March 4th. And of course, if anyone has any questions that you have from us or the team with regard to what we propose at 10 Victoria, we'd be happy to chat with you, whether by Zoom or meeting a person or a phone call. And, you know, we'll see how the public comment goes, but I want to make sure that everyone knows that we're available to meet or talk at everyone's convenience, including the neighbors outside the context of this hearing. You may recall, or some of the commission members may recall, that we are before the Regulation Change Committee back on August 31st. And we talked about the desire to locate a commercial vehicle facility to support a last mile delivery facility at 10 Victoria Drive, and that's the way to approach this regulation. And the committee gave us very good advice as for approach at the meeting. And at the time, we mentioned that the location that we are looking at had been approved by the town for a Walmart retail store, of course. You know, as you said at the time, that that change perfectly summarizes, you know, how dramatically the world has changed. Going from a true bricks and mortar retail store to a use that facilitates the delivery of online, of products that are purchased online. Certainly, the world has changed in a very, very short amount of time, and that's not even including the impacts from COVID. And that change in the retail landscape has not been evolutionary, it has been nothing short of revolutionary. COVID has certainly accelerated that, of course, but retail will never be the same again. So as a result, online retailers need facilities that operate as what is called the last mile for online sales. And that's simply the last part of a product's journey from its manufacturer to your front door. Whether it's Tylenol, if your child has a fever, or a new sweater, or presents for your grandkids, it is nothing short of amazing. What you can order online and have delivered to your door in a matter of hours or maybe a day or two. I mean, candidly, as we all have been quarantining, it never ceases to amaze me what can be delivered and how quickly and how dramatically the retail world has changed. This type of facility also represents an opportunity for both towns and property owners to develop parcels that previously would have been used for big box stores or other uses for which there's no longer markets. It's also an opportunity for locations that are not served by sewers, such as all of your properties that are located in your I-III zone. If you think about three criteria that, you know, properties in the I-III zone have, and the type of uses that might go there in terms of, you know, uses that need a very large parcel, because the I-III zone requires a minimum of 10 acres. If you think about uses that require a low septic demand, because there's no sewers in that area, and even a package plant like Walmart had has a very limited capacity. And then also you think about what truly has a market demand? What is there a demand in the market for in terms of uses? And you overlay those three things on top of one another. This fits that bill, and there's very few other uses other than this that satisfies those. So if you think about it, traditional office, there's not a lot of market, and certainly has a high sewer demand. Medical office, there's a little bit more of a demand, but again, high sewer usage. Multifamily residential, there's no way because of sewer uses, it's not permitted in the I-III zone. And then you're left with true industrial, and again, there's not, there's not much of a demand for true industrial uses as evidenced by the fact that most of your I-III parcels are currently undeveloped. So what I want to do now is just take a look at the regulation amendment, first by looking into what a commercial vehicle facility is. And I think you'll see that our regulation amendment is very, very straightforward. So let's look at what a commercial vehicle facility is. And I'm reading from your definition. It's an establishment where commercial licensed vehicles typically consisting of fleet vehicles designed to carry freight, passengers, or merchandise collectively housed and stored inside and or outside when they are not in service off premises, including administrative, security, dispatch, and minor maintenance facilities thereto, within a fully enclosed building. That's a very good definition of what you'll be hearing about on March 4th in terms of our proposed use for 10 Victoria Drive. So our regulation amendment consists of two components. One is simply a change to your use table as section 10.1 to make commercial vehicle facilities a permitted use subject to a special exception in the I-III zone. And then the next is to supplements or to make changes to section 8.2.3, which are your supplemental standards, and subsection K is for commercial vehicle facilities. And simply what we're doing with 8.2.3K is to make two changes. One is to permit a facility to buy a residential zone, which makes sense because the I-III zone requires a minimum of 10 acres, which allows a use to provide much greater buffering to any residents nearby, but then also to require a 100-foot minimum buffer with no opportunity for any waivers or exceptions of any kind. So let's just read what the proposed addition to 8.2.3K is. It says, "In an industrial district, notwithstanding any other provision of these regulations, a perimeter landscape buffer of a minimum width of 100 feet shall be provided and maintained between a parking facility and any residentially zoned parcel. Said 100-foot landscape buffer shall not be reduced or modified as otherwise might be permitted per 4.3.7B, 6.2.4D, or any other provision of these regulations." Again, that's our regulation amendment, very straightforward. If you notice, 8.2.3K includes other requirements for a commercial vehicle facility that includes fueling or maintenance. You'll find out on March 4th that we are not, we are not requesting approval for any sort of fueling facility, for any sort of maintenance facility. This is simply for the parking of vans and the parking of the driver's vehicles. And frankly, that's a really good thing, because you want those vans and drivers to be utilizing all the local businesses, whether it's a gas station, a coffee shop, a deli, a mechanic, a tire store. They'll all be utilizing local businesses rather than having those uses on site. It also minimizes any possibility of any intrusions on neighboring properties. It's also important to note that we are also not trying to override any of your other precautions in your regulations. So for instance, section 6.2 governs, you know, very well, all lighting and landscaping requirements. And we will be required to comply with all those under our proposed regulation amendment. So at the end of the day, because 6.2 applies, this is going to be a parking deal, just the way as you would have with industrial use or a retail store such as Walmart, with the only difference being there won't be a building there. So frankly, obviously, less opportunity for impacts to neighbors, because there's no building, it's simply the parking of vehicles. I don't want to get into traffic too much, because we're going to do a traffic study or traffic before, in March 4th. But I would tell you, there's also very little opportunity for impacts of traffic, because the way these last mile facilities work is they don't want the vans to be sitting on the roads during rush hours. So what they would, what they typically do is they meter out those vans after the morning rush hour is complete, and then they offer their deliveries throughout the course of the day, and then they will return to the facility in the evening when the evening rush hour, the afternoon rush hour is over. We have provided a fairly extensive narrative to support the application, including the ways in which this is consistent with your POCD. Certainly, under the statute, you were required to do two things when you consider regulation amendment. The first requirement is that you quote "consider" the POCD. And the second is to, is to ensure that the proposal is consistent with your comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan, of course, is different from your POCD. It consists of your zoning map and your zoning regulations. And this proposal is consistent with both your POCD and the comprehensive plan. As we note, a majority of your I-III parcels in your town are undeveloped. The regulation change provides a mechanism for diversifying your tax base and alleviating the burden on residential properties, which is one of the suggestions in your POCD. As we have noted to staff and other elected officials in town, there'll be substantial income from personal property taxes that would be paid on all the vans that would be located at the facility each night. The regulation change also encourages economic growth on Route 25, because as I noted, lots of other uses will be having customers there from, from all the van drivers, whether it's, as I noted, coffee shops, delis, tire stores, et cetera. And then in terms of your comprehensive plan, your zoning regulations, this really makes a lot of sense. There's virtually nothing in your use table where, that is permitted in the I-II zone that is not permitted in the I-III zone. This is, I think, one of very few other uses that is permitted in the I-II, that's not permitted in the I-III. I think there's like a dry cleaner permitted in I-II, not I-III, which makes a lot of sense. I don't think it makes a lot of sense that a commercial vehicle facility is not permitted in the I-III zone, particularly since these types of facilities are going to require larger parcels, such as those that you can find in the I-III as compared to I-II. So I know there's a very brief recitation. I don't think it requires a whole lot of, a whole long dissertation. I think it's consistent with your POCD, it's consistent with your comprehensive plan. It's, I view it as a fairly minor modification or modest modification to your existing zoning regulations. We look forward to describing the use itself when we come back before you on March 4th. But, I mean, we are more than receptive to hear the thoughts and the comments and the questions of the commission on the regulation change itself.
Thank you, Attorney Nuff. This part, I'd like to go to the commissioners for comments or questions. Let's start with Commissioner Maiene. No, no real questions at this time. Commissioner Condon?
No questions.
Commissioner Ambrosi?
I just have a few, couple of questions. You're going to, are you going to give the town a list of all the vehicles that are going to be stored on that property, with the numbers and?
Yes, so obviously, you know, that's been a point of discussion, but we can certainly work with the tax assessor. We have spoken to Justin on a couple of different occasions, and we will make every effort to make sure that the declarations are filed so that the town can receive the tax that, frankly, that is due.
And then you're going to, you're going to pave the whole parking lot?
Yeah, but consistent with your requirements. Again, I'm trying to be cautious not to get into the site plan itself and special exception, because that hearing isn't open. But as I said, you know, any of these uses are going to have to comply with all of your other requirements as found in point two with regard to parking or lighting and landscaping.
All right, would you have a problem with weight limits on the trucks, on the vans? Do you know what the limit is?
Yeah, I mean, they're going to be traditional, I mean, frankly, we've seen them on the roads. Traditional sprinter vans, they're not going to be, you know, larger vehicles, they're not going to be trailer trailers. They're going to be typical vans that we all see on the roads or, you know, stopping in our homes every other day.
Okay, do you know what the limit on the weight on those are? You know what the weight limit is?
I don't know. Off the top of my head, we'd be happy to find out.
No, that'd be great if you can bring that back to us. Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Schneider? Oh, he's not here. Commissioner Westland?
Mr. Nuff, 400 spaces. How many, how many of these spaces does the tenant plan on occupying right off the bat? You know, they plan on using all 400 right away?
Again, I don't want to get into the site plan specifics. I'm not trying to be rude. I just want to stay within the bounds of this public hearing, which is a regulation amendment. I would tell you the answer is, the answer is yes. I mean, it's going to be several hundred to start and quickly ramp up. But I mean, again, we'd be happy to provide greater detail on the actual, you know, use of the property 10 Victoria when that application is opened on March 4th. And I apologize, I just want to make sure, you know, there's no confusion between the records.
Understood. And all the vehicles are planning on being, they're going to be registered in Monroe?
No, I mean, but there's ways around that. You know, the statutes provide a very specific way in which the town can make sure that it receives the necessary tax revenue. So, and merely by registering them in Monroe doesn't do that. So there is a manner in which the owner has to file a declaration. You know, we and our tenants will work closely with the town to make sure that all the, all the vans are registered, or not registered, but are included in the declaration so that Justin can tax them appropriately and the town can receive substantial tax revenue.
Okay, and I'm assuming these are all, you know, new vans and they're fleet maintained, correct?
Yes, I mean, as you can imagine, they're, they're not inexpensive. So again, both the number and the value of those vans will work to ensure substantial tech, personal property tax coming through.
You know, and do you know how many shifts the company runs?
Yeah, I mean, typically one, because what will happen is, as I indicated, they'll leave, they'll get loaded in the morning. And then once the morning rush hour is complete, they'll head out on the road, and they will, I mean, it's frankly, something of a logistical miracle. But they will, they will pack the van in a way that they can travel the roads in a very efficient manner, going from one house to the next, drop off each of the packages, and then they will return that evening. So it's, you know, that's pretty much how it works. I mean, could there be some, you know, minor modification to that, where someone comes in the middle of the day, of course. But for the most part, the general, general comings and goings are, you know, leaving nine or 10:00 in the morning, coming back after, you know, 6:00, 7:00, 8:00 o'clock at night, what's up, what's the last package and so forth.
Right, trying to work around the heavy, heavy traffic flow hours.
It doesn't make any sense for them to be sitting in traffic either.
Right, right. And I know you touched on this a little bit. I'm just, my minor question is just based around the fact that we have a river right there. So I'm worried about the trucks being older, leaking, fueling, that kind of thing. You did indicate that the trucks are going to be fueled off-site, because there's a lot of mobile fueling operations now that go out and fuel these vehicles at night when it's dark, and they can't really see what they're doing. You're saying they're fueled off-site.
Right, so your regulations for commercial vehicle facilities permits fueling facilities on those types of properties. We are, as you will see on March 4th, we are not proposing any of those. So yes, we're very cognizant of the wetlands and water course. And as an aside, we have received administrative approval from the Wetland Commission. They authorized their wetland agent to approve the small changes that we're making. So that's, again, we're happy to detail that for you on March 4th. But, you know, our development window is actually, envelope is actually a bit smaller than what Walmart was approved for. So I think the Wetland Commission and the agent was pleased with what they saw.
That's all I have. Thanks, Mr. Nuff.
Commissioner Panici?
I have no question at this time.
Commissioner Lupo?
Just one question and a comment. I just want to thank you for your concise and very thorough presentation. It answered a lot of my questions before even getting in here, so thank you for that. And I know, I understand staying in the lane of tonight's topic and the regulation, not the site development. But one question, distinct, you know, if we do approve this or go through with this, I know there's about 400 vehicles. How many parking spaces, though, are you planning on having to accommodate the driver's personal cars and vehicles?
I mean, it's pretty much one for one. I mean, obviously, once a van leaves, you know, a driver can park his or her personal vehicle there. Again, as I said, you know, I'm really reluctant to get into the details, because I don't want somebody to claim that you've been, you know, hearing evidence outside that hearing. But I will say generically, that's how, you know, on any of these sorts of facilities, that's how it would work.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Rick, do you have anything to add?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. The, my initial report, the submitted regulation text amendments are, have been determined to be complete. The petitioner's narrative adequately explains the need to allow commercial vehicle facilities with the Industrial III district to accommodate this use, which is currently allowed only within the I-II district. within the I two district. The plan of conservation and development recommends the creation of zoning initiatives, which will promote economic development around the Victor Knox Swiss Army Facility and the Corporate Drive Industrial Park. These are the only two areas in town with the I three districts. For the commission during its review and after listening to the S E P application on March 4th, this, the commission will have to determine that this text determine will not adversely affect the surrounding neighborhoods or overburden the roads and town services and is consistent with the P O C D and comprehensive plan as reported earlier by the applicant. This application was referred to the West Council of Governments, North Kentucky Valley, Council of Governments, Metro Cog and the Town of Trumbull in accordance with state statutes. And, Mr. Chairman, I just remind you that the public hearing is limited to the text amendment discussion only tonight when you get into the public portion. That is it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one thing to add, this is Georgia. There was a letter received from the Conservation Commission. It just says in reference to the Town Victoria Drive application, I do believe it to be very specific to the site plan, the special exception application, therefore I'm not going to read it into the record currently, but I do want to make it known that there was something received.
Thank you, Georgia, we'll hold that for the next hearing. Before we move on to public participation, I'm going to read the guidelines for public These following guidelines are to assist those who wish to speak during public participation session. The commission welcomes public participation and asks that speakers please limit their comments. Speakers are requested to first state their name and address for the record. Speakers may offer objective comments about planning and zoning matters and land use related concerns that should be brought to the commission's attention. Commission will not permit any expressions of personal complaints or defamatory comments about the commission, members of the Planning and Zoning Department, nor against any person connected with the Town of Monroe or any individuals or firms or corporations. The chair has a discretion to limit comment time, generally three minutes per speaker is allowed. And written statements are always welcome. That said, are there any members of the public here tonight that would like to comment on the application before us? Hearing none other, once again, are there any members of the public here tonight that would like to comment on this application before us? If not, then we'll go back to Attorney Knopf, if you'd like, want to sum up.
I'm not sure that that's necessary, Mr. Chairman. Again, we thank the commission for its attention and for its questions, and we look forward to being back before you on March 4th, and we'll be discussing the actual special exception application in detail.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Rick, do you want, do you want to close the hearing then tonight on this?
No, I think it's important that we keep both open, so.
Both open? All right, then we'll continue this hearing until March the 4th. Moving on, public hearing number six, as previously mentioned, is going to be continued, not going to be continued, but it's not going to be opened until March the 4th. Number seven, this is a re-subdivision application. This is S U B 2021 dash oh one, file number 1266C, 515 and 529 Cutler's Farm Road. Ryan, do you have the public notice?
I do. In accordance with CGS eight dash seven D, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, February 18th, 2021 at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter via go-to meeting and available by phone. S U B 2021 dash zero one, file number one C, sorry, 1266C dash 515 at, and 529 Cutler's Farm Road, R F three, re-subdivision application proposing a three lot residential, single-family subdivision located at 515 and 529 Cutler's Farm Road, Assessor Map 59 lots one to two, totaling in 15.7 acres, including a proposed open space parcel. United Methodist Church of Monroe, C O Brian Sherwood, applicant slash owner. Please check the Monroe Town of, sorry, please check the Town of Monroe website for announcements and meeting cancellations, reschedule, rescheduling for instructions for attending and/or participating remotely electronically. Complete details and copies of all related materials associated with the above matters are on file and available for viewing in the Town Planning and Zoning Department offices by appointment and on the town's website. Notice was published in voices the past two Wednesdays.
Thank you, Commissioner Condon. Rick, do you have the exhibits?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, exhibit number one, application and narrative, number two, the plan set, number three, comments from the town engineer, number four, certified mail receipts, number five, neighbor comment regarding the re-subdivision application, and that is it.
Thank you, Rick. And whom do we have representing the United Methodist Church?
Mr. Chairman, Dave Bjorkland is going to be representing the church. Thank you. My name's Dave Bjorkland, I'm president of the firm, Back Bjorkland Associates, and we have offices in Monroe, and I'm a professional engineer registered in the state of Connecticut. If, if you could give me control, I'll try to bring up the drawings. However, about 15 minutes ago, I had problems with my network, so, well, let's give it a try.
Dave, I'm gonna send this over to you, if you have any issues, I can pull the maps up too, just let me know.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Yeah, no, I can't connect to my network, so if you could bring up the, the screen, this is a pretty simple proposal.
Be one second.
Okay, there, I'm back. Okay, thank you. Sorry for that, the, this is a re-subdivision of land at 515 and 529 Cutler's Farm Road. The parcel of land is currently owned by the United Methodist Church of Monroe, and the property, I'm sure that all the commission members are familiar with this, there's been a, a church and a parsonage on the property since at least the early 1980s. And the, this, the southernmost lot here is, is, it contains a church, meeting room and associated parking facilities. And on the lot next door, the, you know, lot number two is the, where the parsonage is located, and the parsonage, the church is on its own freestanding lot and the parsonage is on the larger parcel of about nine acres. And what the proposal is before you this evening is to subdivide that larger parcel with the parsonage on it into a, a one freestanding building lot that the church plans to market. So in, in, in that regard, it, it's a pretty straightforward proposal. We do propose a grant of open space in the rear of the property. There's another parcel in the rear of the property that you'll notice on the map that just indicates that, you know, the ownership is not clear. It's either owned by the church or it's owned by the Aquarian Water Company, but it really doesn't affect our subdivision, so we just decided to leave, leave it labeled as that. So it, you know, as I, as I've said, it's a conforming three lot re-subdivision, and the goal here is to create, you know, one new building lot. There were some comments from staff, and Rick Schultz and I had discussed today, you know, how we were gonna proceed with the application, and I really think there's some, some items on the town engineer's report that we need to discuss with the commission before we can finalize. So if it's, I'm okay with the commission, I'm gonna go right to, to Scott's discussion or his review. The first one, his first comment with regards to the dimensions of the right of way and the proposed survey monumentation, those are not, at least one and two of A are not an issue. Number three, it is an item that I'd like to discuss with the commission. He indicates compliant off roadway shoulder grading along the subdivision frontage should be provided. We have only provided grading on the shoulder of the road right in front of the proposed lot, and we have done that to provide compliant site distance. We have not proposed to do any grading, additional grading along the entire frontage of the subdivision. The parsonage and the church have been there for years, and Cutler's Farm Road is a well-established highway. We, we don't want to do that, be required to do the grading along, entirely along the frontage, the grades are steep, and the amount of earthwork that would be done and would be required would be extensive, and to be honest with you, the cost of that work would outstrip what the lot is worth. That work, we, we just can't accomplish that work. So I, I'm gonna want to have, if we could discuss that once I get done discussing some of the other items. Traffic and safety, access to the open space should be provided. We could provide an easement from Cutler's Farm Road back to the open space. I think it would be rather meaningless. That parcel of open space joins land of the Bridgeport Hydraulics Company or Aquarian, and that is a smaller parcel of land that is contiguous to the Great Hollow Lake and Wolf Park properties. The area already has extensive hiking trails in it, people access it from the parking area on Cutler's Farm Road, and I think that's how they'll continue to access this piece of property. To provide access across this property, as I said, would, in my opinion, would be meaningless. No one would ever use it. There's a parking lot, a crosswalk down where the railroad rails to trails crosses Cutler's Farm Road, and I think that's going to be, continue to be the point of access as time goes forward. Drainage and utilities, the limits and extent of the public water main and the roadway should be indicated, noting it should be extended across the subdivision frontage. There currently is, the water main terminates up in front of the church itself, very close to the, the church's driveway where it accesses Cutler's Farm Road, which is at the very south end of the parcel. In order to run the water main across the entire frontage of the property, the, it would be a 1,000 foot extension of the water main, and that, that cost could be $200,000, again, outstripping the value of one building lot that would be created here. There is a provision in the subdivision regulations where a waiver can be requested, and depending upon what the discussion is with the commission tonight, we're willing to, you know, to file for that waiver. The waiver, you know, really, in my mind, addresses subdivisions of four lots or more, but there are other areas of it where it requests that, if we're not going to extend the water main, that we make a formal request for a waiver, we're willing to do that after some discussion with the commission. The comment on siltation and erosion control, this really goes back to, Scott is looking for additional erosion control, assuming that we're going to be grading the entire frontage of the property and creating a compliant shoulder all the way from where the church is currently down to where the proposed home lot is to be constructed. Other items that Scott addresses with regards to the bond, really, this goes back and reflects that he's, he's looking for bond numbers, assuming that we're going to be improving the entire frontage of the property and grading the entire frontage. He also has asked here, which in your subdivision regulations is a requirement, I think it leans more towards when you're constructing a brand new road, but he has a, he's requesting that we show street tree plantings, and anybody who's familiar with the property, there's not, you know, this is a heavily wooded piece of property right down to the top of the embankment that was created when Cutler's Farm Road was improved back in the 1960s. I don't think that adding, I don't think adding street trees here is, is of any requirement to, you know, that makes any sense. That concludes my presentation. You know, as I said, I'd like to have a discussion on some of these items so that at the next, at the March 4th hearing, we'll know how to go forward and how to proceed with finalizing this re-subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bjorkland. Well, let's go to the commissioners for questions at this point, we'll start with Commissioner Lupo.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Do any of the improvements, will Cutler's Farm Road itself be changed at all, any of the sightlines or any of the road, will any of that be affected or changed?
We're proposing to regrade the Cutler's Farm Road in an easterly direction from our proposed driveway for the new house, to improve the sightline for the driveway for the house so that it is compliant with the town's driveway regulations. We're not proposing to do any other work on Cutler's Farm Road, but that grading, which is pretty expensive in order to achieve. is pretty expensive in order to achieve compliant site distance.
Georgia, can you zoom in on that area there we're talking about?
Yeah, give me one second.
Right where the house is, proposed house?
As you can see to the, to the south, or as you can come out of the driveway for the proposed dome, looking to the right, that shoulder is pretty steep in that location. It gets steeper as you go off Cutler's Farm Road, but what we're proposing to do is to grade that back so that we get compliant sightline from that driveway to Cutler's Farm Road.
With that impact, I mean, I'm reading over some of the materials, and I know some of the neighbors are concerned that these changes are going to lead to cars being able to go even faster on that part of the road there, which I, you know, I live right down the street. I drive that every day, so I can understand their concerns. Do you feel or do they think that, do you see that being an issue or a problem with these changes?
No, I don't think that these improvements are going to enhance the speed on Cutler's Farm Road. I travel Cutler's Farm Road every day to work. The speeds on Cutler's Farm Road are, I agree with the neighbor's comment, people go way too fast on Cutler's Farm Road, and it, I think it's an enforcement issue.
Okay.
So this, there's, there's no trees. This is, this is the part of Cutler's Farm Road where the embankment is really sharp. And, you know, there's no trees on it. It's, it's going to improve the visibility from this driveway, but when you're coming down or going up Cutler's Farm Road, this isn't going to make a difference.
Okay, I have no other questions right now. Thank you.
Commissioner Panici.
I like the improvements, and I like the presentation. I don't have any other questions at this time.
Commissioner Westland.
Mr. Bjorkland, how far up is this, this lot going to be from the entrance to the rails to trails area?
I can't say exactly. I could provide that at the March fourth meeting, but it's, it's over a quarter of a mile.
It is that far, huh? Good. And then the other question I have is this area in the southwestern section of the map, owner, ownership unknown. Is there no record of who's, you know, who's been paying taxes on that area of land?
The, according to the assessor's map, it is the property of the church. And of course, the church doesn't pay taxes. So, but then there's strong historical information that it probably belongs to Aquarian.
Right. It's pretty much locked in by these, by these other areas at this point, so it doesn't really matter in that respect.
Well, that, that's, that's the way we looked at it after looking into the title pretty extensively. And, you know, I don't think, you know, we didn't contact Aquarian, but we felt that, you know, of what difference would it make to them? And from the church's standpoint of subdividing their property, it didn't make any difference to them.
Yeah, I'm just wondering how it's going to affect this, you know? I'm wondering how this is going to affect this at this point, you know, who's going to end up dealing with it because eventually it's not going to be the church's property from the, from the looks of things.
You know, there are procedures, they, they're a little complicated. You can, you know, file, if somebody wanted to take possession, there's a process called quiet title, you know, that could go forward, but because both, both possible owners are, you know, not paying taxes on it, you know, and it doesn't, it doesn't serve anybody.
Right.
And I agree, some, someday down the road, somebody will find a reason to resolve it. The other rejoinder is Great Oak Farm, and it doesn't serve any purpose to Great Oak Farm either.
Right, right. All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Ambrosi.
Yeah, good evening, Dave. What's your, what's your sightline now?
Along Cutler's Farm Road, it was, I don't, I've got the drawings here, I don't know if it shows the existing. It doesn't comply. I believe, I thought it was about, hold on, I've, I've got it right here. Oh, it's, it's about fifty feet.
And by you grading off the front, are you going to meet the sightline requirement?
Oh, yes, definitely.
All right. And so, um, well, that's one question, because I wasn't, I was concerned by why Scott is looking for you to do more work there.
Well, what Scott wants us to do is to grade the entire, you know, probably twelve, fifteen hundred foot of frontage on our side of Cutler's Farm Road and create a nine-foot shoulder. And if you, if you're familiar with Cutler's Farm Road, that's outside, it's, you know, an enormous amount of work.
Right.
You know, but the embankment there is, it's point fifteen feet high. You know, when the town rebuilt Cutler's Farm Road in the sixties, I, I can see why they didn't, why they didn't do that work.
All right, so you think, you think that you, you guys could work that out? Because you're going to meet the sightline anyway, right?
We're, yeah, the grading we show complies with the sightline. We're not proposing to create a shoulder all the way up to the church's driveway.
All right, the other question I have to ask you about the easement, are you willing to give the easement to the open space?
Sure.
Okay, and then, I think that was about all I had for right now. Oh, how about the, you don't want to extend the main down the road?
No, as, as I said, if, you know, that, that could be a $200,000, could be $250,000 if we hit a lot of rock. And I, I just don't think it makes any sense.
All right, Rick, do we have, we have water, we have, do we have public water down the road further than that?
Yeah, and I'm, I'm, I'm going to get confirmation from Aquarian, so at the March fourth meeting, you'll know exactly where it ends and begins.
Okay, that'll be good for me. All right, Dave, that's all I have for today. Thanks.
Commissioner Condon.
I'm, I'm okay with the grading, just for the site, the initial sightline. And I would echo Leon with the, the easement for the open space. That's it.
Commissioner Maiene.
My questions were answered, so no further.
Okay, then I have no other comments. And Rick, do you have anything?
Actually, the applicant wanted to hear the feelings of the commission. So what we're going to do now is to have a joint meeting with staff and the applicant and go over all these issues. We'll have that information for you at the March fourth meeting.
All right, then, let's go to the public tonight. Since this is a public hearing, are there any members of the public here present tonight that would like to comment on this particular application before the planning and zoning commission? Please, if they're all, make yourselves known.
I'd like to, that, Stephen Kellogg, I'm at six Hannah Lane.
Go ahead, Mr. Kellogg.
Great, yeah, I, I'm just really here to get a sense, a better sense of what's, what's being built across the street, and just make sure I understand. So, so the, so the church would remain, lot one would remain, at least for now, the plan is lot one remains as is?
That's correct. There'll be no change to the church layout, driveway, building, or the parcel itself.
Gotcha, okay.
Or for that matter, the parsonage.
Okay, so lot two essentially is the same too. And then I, I just, thank you for your presentation, David, but I, and then I, do we, is there any sense of what the, the proposed house, what that structure would be like? Is it sort of, do we, do we have a sense, or, or on the, on the, on the layout, it looks like it'd be pretty close to the road? I, I was also interested in that question of how close would it be to where the, where the path is down there and stuff like that, and what, what type of structure are we talking about? Not that I have big objections, I'm just sort of trying, just trying to get a sense of what, what's going to be happening in the neighborhood here.
Yeah, the, I can tell you, you know, what the thought process was when I met with the trustees of the church. And, you know, those, those meetings were six months ago, we all know, but the residential housing market in Fairfield County has changed since then. The idea is to put market the lot, you know, to either a builder or a user. One of the reasons why we created a lot of this size is the church was thinking that this might be attractive to somebody who wanted to have horses, or to have, just have more property and have the great access to the open space to get to Great Hollow Lake. So what we, it's one of the reasons why we made the lot bigger, hoping that somebody would build, you know, a larger house and probably push it back further into the rear of the property. But what actually is going to get built there, the market's going to drive that.
Okay, so is the plan, do you, do you know, maybe, maybe nobody knows or nobody can say, but is the, is the plan to, assuming the subdivision gets approved and where the lot sells and then a builder comes in after, or would they, would somebody build this on, build this and then sell it, or, or do we not know that?
The, the plan is, is to put the lot on the market and sell it to a user or a builder.
Okay, okay. Yeah, well, if that water main does end up coming down any further, I want to get in on it. Having, having lost, having lost our water on more than one occasion, I'm, I'm interested. I'm just saying, knowing that it's that close is, is interesting to me. But I think that's, I think that's everything, just, just kind of scoping it out. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Are there any other members of the public here tonight that would like to comment? Are there any other members of the public here tonight that'd like to comment on this Hearing none? Then we will continue this public hearing until March the fourth, the next regular scheduled meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you, members of the commission and Mr. German.
Thank you, Mr. Bjorkland. Moving on, number eight on the agenda is a public hearing. This is an SEP twenty twenty-one dash oh-two, file number one six two seven A ninety-eight Enterprise Drive I district. Ryan, do you have the publication?
I do. In accordance with CGS eight dash seven D, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, February eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, at seven PM, or soon thereafter via go-to meeting and by phone. SEP twenty twenty-one dash zero-two, file number one six two seven A ninety-eight Enterprise Drive I two, special exception permit, application for the construction of a nine thousand square foot building, parking lot, outdoor storage areas, and necessary site improvements for property located at ninety-eight Enterprise Drive, Assessor Map ninety-four, lot fifteen, in the industrial two district I two, Enterprise Drive LLC, Dan Bartoli, applicant slash owner. Please check the Town of Monroe website for announcements of meeting cancellation, rescheduling, and for instructions for attending and or participating remotely electronically. Complete details and copies of all related materials associated with the above matters are on file and available for viewing in the Monroe Planning and Zoning Department offices by appointment and on the town's website. Notice was published the past two Wednesdays in voices.
Thank you, Ryan. Rick, can you read the exhibits?
Exhibit number one, application and supporting materials. Number two, photometric plan, new commercial building, site improvement plans. Number three, stormwater management plan. Number four, certified mail receipts. Number five, comments from the town engineer. Number six, updated plan set. Number seven, stormwater management plan updated. Number eight, response to town comments. And number nine, comments from the town planner. That is all.
Thank you, Rick, for the applicant.
Good evening. My name is Larry Edwards, professional engineer with offices at two twenty-seven Stephanie Road in Easton. This, this property was before the commission, I believe, back about two thousand seven, two thousand eight. And at that time, it was approved by your commission, and we had likewise came in with a number of extensions. And we basically are now back in with a new application, going from what was two bedroom or two bedrooms, two, two buildings to, to one larger building. The site was started construction after your original approval. A large amount of the site work has already been completed. We have been working with the conservation or inland wetlands commission over the last few years. Number one, to, to try to stabilize some of the work that had been done early on. And we prepared a mitigation plan, which was completed and approved by the commission. We have likewise gone back to the commission, inland wetness commission, for a permit for the existing proposal, and have been granted that permit. We basically are looking to construct a nine thousand square foot building, again, within the area that had been prepared for the previous app, application. And with that, we are proposing a parking along the back of the prop, back of the parking area or the paved area, and a, a storage for material bulk storage at the far end of the, of the developed area. And the major changes, again, was, was one bedroom or one building to, from two buildings. And the original proposal had a much longer driveway that swept around to the, all the way to the northern end of what we're showing as our, our building proposal. And we have basically shortened that down, brought it down to the center of the, of the site, and again, providing access into the rear portions of, of the, the proposed building. The building is, basically is going to be a, it, a maintenance type of facility for, for contractors, whoever else, there'll be, some will might be used by the, by the applicant, and others may be rented out as individual spaces. And there's proposed to be dividing walls inside the bays so that they can be broken up into, you know, one, two, or whatever number a proposed tenant may wish to have. The only amenities inside will be a washroom, bathroom for each of the proposed bays that we have designed into our septic system, which will basically be in the same location as previously approved, to the lower part of what is a stone retaining wall, rubble wall that's in place now. We have also included a storm drainage system. The original plan The original plan, uh, actually, it was a longer driveway and it was included. A second stormwater quality basin was included in the north end of the site, actually on the adjoining property, under an easement. We have eliminated the need for that with a shorter driveway and are basically proposing just one stormwater basin. Where, uh, the second one was proposed in the original plan. We have, uh, also included a, um, dynamic separator unit, which will, uh, control the, uh, and treat the runoff for the first one inch, which is accordance with, uh, DEEPs regulations, um, and that will be included as part of our stormwater plan. Uh, we've also included in the application package, an erosion control plan, which meets all the requirements of the, um, erosion control and certain conservation manual. There is also a landscape plan included, um, and a, um, a lighting plan, which has also been provided. So, um, that pretty much makes up the extent of the application. We have basically got the last comments from the town engineer, which came in, uh, earlier this week. We have made those changes. So we've complied with all of the town engineer's comments, um, in his reviews, along with staff, and, um, we submitted new plans. I'm not sure if we did it today or yesterday, but we submitted revised plans. So the plans that you have now on file, um, are complete and meet all the requirements and comments of the town staff. That's basically the extent of the application. We'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Edwards. Um, let's go to the commissioners with any questions. While the commissioners are asking questions, do you have an elevation of the front of the building? So we can see what it's going to look like?
Oh yeah, there's architectural plans are in here. It basically, it's going to be a one-story building on the front, because it's going to be built into the bank. So it's, it's, uh, you know, a significantly taller building from the back, but as you see from the front profiles, you'll go up to a single level. Uh, it's just going to be a basic, um, metal framed, metal sided building. Again, there's no access to the building from, from the front. And even at that point, the building is still, um, considerably lower than the road itself. So, uh, it isn't something that's going to have a visible impact. There's basically, uh, 20 feet of drop from the edge of the curb to the, uh, to where the front of the building would be graded. So, anything, you're going to be looking over the top of the building. You're not going to be really looking at the front. A profile of the front. It's, it's tucked in, it's tucked low, so that it won't be any visual impact, uh, to the road at all from the road.
All right, let's go to the commissioners. We'll start with Commissioner Mayany.
So you're not proposing, uh, much landscaping here at this, at this location?
Uh, no, uh, we're basically proposing, uh, trees along the front and we have a landscaping at the entrance. And, uh, that's really the extent. Everything else, again, is sloping off to the back. It'll, it'll be, um, vegetated, of course, for stabilization, but it's not something you're going to see anything that we do, except for the people that are going to come in the driveway. From the, from the street, there won't be any, uh, visual impact that will be, that would be generated by, by installing additional landscaping.
What about lights for the parking lot?
We have, there's a, there is a lighting plan that's, that's included with the proposal. And, um, there's going to be basically lighting on, uh, on the front of the, rather with the back of the building, but the front of the entrance where the garage doors are, which will service, uh, that area. And we have a couple of, um, of lights proposed coming down the driveway. So there'll be, uh, access lighting for there. The, the other part of the site is going to be for basically storage, uh, and access for the storage. And we haven't proposed any additional lighting in that portion of the site, because there won't be anything that'll be used at nighttime.
Okay. And obviously those are all going to be dark sky compliant and all that stuff.
Yeah, that's correct.
Um, the, the work going on in the building, is it going to be, uh, is it just a nine to five per se? Or is there multiple shifts? What, what's going on there?
It, it would be expected it would be nine to five. It's going to be, you know, a type of person that's got machinery that he's going to, you know, work on in there and, um, that's the, that's the shift it would be. There is no manufacturing that would be a night shift versus a, a day shift.
Excellent. All right. For now, that's all I have.
Commissioner Condon?
Uh, no questions for now.
Commissioner Ambrosi?
What is the use of the building going to be for?
It's going to be, um, commercial warehouse, but it'll also have the function for facility space, you know, for, um, for contractors to, um, you know, store, but again, inside, anything that's going to happen is going to be inside. But the, um, workplace for contractors, that's the primary purpose of it.
So you're going to make it a contract yard?
No, it wasn't. It's in this zone, you're not allowed to store anything outside. So everything is going to be, uh, kept inside. That's, that's going to be there. Um, there is no outside storage for machinery.
Okay. And what's, is the property, the property's vacant right now? Or what's it being used for now?
Right now, it is, it's, it's a site under construction. Uh, the site's leveled. Uh, and, and, uh, it's, it's basically just under, again, they worked under the previous approval until that lapsed. And then, um, we've been basically working forward, uh, to get, to get through Wetlands and now through your commission.
On this property, Rick? But they were addressed now by the wetlands. And I'm pleased to, uh, inform the commission. The construction of the building now will make this a, uh, it's a part of the, uh, industrial park. But, uh, now with the application approved by Wetlands and now before the commission, they will be moving forward and addressing all the issues.
Yeah, but I believe this was brought before, uh, planning and zoning a few years ago, right?
Oh, yes, several years ago, yes.
For, for violations?
Yeah, it, it turned, it turned into a, a, a storage area. But a, as the applicant indicated, this property has been, uh, graded. And now they're coming in with a permanent building and they're moving forward. So that's a good, that's a good sign.
So all the equipment is removed from that, that site?
That's my understanding.
Well, do we know that or not?
Larry, what's your understanding at that site? Cause I haven't been there in a while.
I haven't been, I, I'm going to say the same thing. I have not been there. I think the app, my, my client is here, uh, if you.
Yeah, this, this is Dan Bartoli. My name didn't come up for some reason. I'm one of the owners. And currently there are a few pieces of equipment there that we have, uh, in, in between jobs, we leave our equipment there. And now that we're in downtime, uh, for a season, they've been there for a couple of months. They will be moving out to begin the March. So you've, you've been storing your equipment there? For short periods of time, just, just in between work. All right. So, so Rick, you're saying that there's no, no violations on that property from planning and zoning?
Not, especially now, Leon, with the submission of final site plans addressing the permanent construction.
No, I, I'm just asking if, if any existing violations are on that property right now?
No, that is correct. There's no current cease and desist orders.
Right, but, but he says he still has equipment on that property, right?
Right. And that's, that's why he's working with staff, especially with wetlands and now zoning.
No, because I, I know that we, we went over this a few times, um, going back a few years ago, right? My, I think you were on a commission, Mike, at that point too, that we were trying.
I don't remember this process pretty now.
Yeah, cause Bill, I, I believe Bill was real concerned about it and, and, um, I think we pretty much, we talked about this property to try to get into compliance. And so, um, I just want to make sure that, that we're not going to go down another road that we went down in the first application.
No, you're absolutely right, Lena. I'm going to give my report shortly and convey to you what was said at the ARB board.
Okay, that's all I have for now.
Commissioner Westland?
No, I have no questions. Yeah, looking at me, good on the violations. I'm in favor of proper development. I have no questions.
Commissioner Panici?
I have a question. Mr. Edwards, can you go over the building? Is it a typical, um, metal building?
What was, I'm, I'm sorry, what, I, I.
Is it a typical metal building? Is that what it is?
Is it going to be difficult to build?
No, it's a typical metal building, metal.
It's a typical, I'm sorry. Uh, yeah, it's, it's a typical metal, um, industrial building.
And the roof lines, as I see there with a, of the pitch? Do you have any place to put mechanicals?
Uh, not, not on the roof? No, I don't believe so.
Mechanicals are inside of the building.
Okay. That's all I have. One other question. So it's not visible from the street at all?
The only thing you're going to see is the roof for the most part.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Lupo?
Thank you. Um, I just want to agree with Commissioner Westland that I'm glad that Mr. Bartoli addressed all the wetland violations. And I think it's a great plan. Uh, my, well, one question is the outdoor storage. I know that you said that, um, there would be no outdoor storage of machinery, but I do see that there is some outdoor storage included in the plan. What will be stored outside? And can you show us on the map where that would be?
Yeah, outside storage. Go, go ahead.
That, that has the, uh, outdoor storage and it's, it's a very small area. I believe, uh, it's about 1,700 square feet. Uh, we, we would use, our materials would consist of potentially pipe, precast. We do, uh, drainage work, the company. Um, and we would store any excess materials, again, in between jobs, and then use them from there and move them forward to other work.
Okay. Can you zoom out a little bit on that? Just so I can see where, okay. Got it. Thank you very much. That was my only question.
Thank you. Um, how tall is the building going to be?
It's thirty-five and a half feet to the, to the peak.
From the slab to the peak is thirty-five and a half?
Yes.
Cause I see you have a, the elevation on the road is 474 and then the floor is 432. So you've got about 40 feet there.
Yeah, we're way down there.
Cause it is, I mean, no offense, but it's not the most attractive building that I, we've seen here.
So with the, with the vegetation along the road and the slope, you're barely going to see that, especially in, in the summer, when the, when the vegetation fills in. You're, you're not even going to see the roof on that.
Okay. Rick, do you have anything?
Uh, yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. The submitted application, uh, has been determined to be complete. Application was referred to the ARB, which reported favorably to the planning and zoning with, uh, recommendations. The recommendations are to not use slats in the dumpster enclosure and use traditional materials to provide adequate landscaping along, uh, Enterprise Drive and the Axis Drive, and to provide sufficient, uh, screening in the back. No roof mounted HVAC, which you heard from the applicant tonight. Uniform colors of the doors and the, uh, the overhead doors and the entrance doors. The proposed 9,000 square foot pre-engineered metal building, uh, contains six bays for future individual tenants, which will require separate tenant occupancy permits. Uh, public water and onsite, uh, subsurface system will be provided. The, the main building will be a forest green color and the roof will be tan. Adequate onsite parking has been provided for the intended uses, including 24 total spaces and two facility parking spaces. As the applicant indicated, there is a 40-foot plus elevation drop from Enterprise Drive, uh, resulting in a substantial retaining wall system for the construction of the building and associated parking area. As noted by the ARB, the applicant has agreed to enclose the dumpster with traditional treatment instead of the slats. Seven, the outside storage areas will be adequately screened from Enterprise Drive due to the elevation drop. As indicated, this is a substantial drop. You will just see the roof. Uh, but obviously screening is important and the commission, uh, always wants that to be covered. The, uh, lighting will be dark sky compliant. And the applicant has provided an adequate sediment erosion control plan. And I, I just want to make a, a, a comment. When I came on board a couple of years ago, the Planning and Zoning Commission really, uh, directed staff to get these remaining parcels that have been partially excavated, uh, yeah, approved and, and part of the grand list. And that's why I'm pretty excited to see this moving forward. And, uh, I look forward to working with the, uh, the applicant. That's it.
Thank you, Rick. Let's go to the public. If there are any members of the public here tonight that would like to comment on this proposal, please make yourselves known. Sounds pretty quiet. Once again, are there any members of the public here tonight that would like to comment on this, um, application? If not, Mr. Edwards, do you have any summation? If not?
Mike, I have one more question for.
Mr. Edwards, you're muted.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Um, does somebody have another question that I just hear?
Yeah, I wanted to find out. He said that there's not going to be any mechanicals outside the building? Yes, not on the roof. Not on the roof. Not, but not outside the building either? Well, they'd be. It's going to be inside. Right. Is it? Maybe air conditioners on the inside or, or, uh, or furnace on the inside. You might have to vent. Any air conditioning units? No. No, no office space? No, no office space. Okay, that's all I have, Mike.
All right. If there are no other comments or questions by the, um, commissioner or the public, then we'll go ahead and close this hearing. And, uh, thank you, Mr. Edwards.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bartoli.
Thanks for, thank you.
Next on the agenda, number nine, we have a special exemption permit, SEP 2021-04, file number 1629A580 Pepper Street. Commissioner Condon, do you want to read the, um, notice?
Sure. Uh, in accordance with CGS 8-7D, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, February 18th, 2021 at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter via go-to meeting and by phone. Uh, regarding the following, SEP 2021-04, file number 1629A580 Pepper Street I II, special exception permit application for a special exception use consisting of office, warehouse, and manufacturing to accommodate a wood toy manufacturing tenant in an existing building dated at 580 Pepper Street Assessor Matt 103, Lot 23, in the industrial two district I II, including nine waiver requests. including nine waiver requests as the applicant is not proposing any exterior modifications to the building slash site layout. Solely Engineering applicant, Robert Malin, revocable trust owner. Please check the town in Monroe website for announcements of meetings, cancellations, rescheduling, and for instructions for attending and or participating remotely and electronically. Complete details and copies of all related materials associated with the above matters are on file and available for viewing on Monroe Planning and Zoning Department official offices by appointment and on the town's website. Notice was published in voices past two Wednesdays.
Thank you, Commissioner Condon. Rick, do you want to read the exhibits?
Exhibit number one, application and narrative. Number two, plan set. Number three, certified mailings for Inland Wetland Commission. No regulated activity determined. Five, town engineer, no comment, as as there is no exterior site work. And six, comments from the town planner, which I'll read after the applicant makes their presentation. That is all.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Looks like we have Mr. Soli here for the applicant.
Yes, good evening, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Kevin Soli. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with Solely Engineering. I'm not sure if you could make me a presenter. I could just run through a real quick presentation and kind of talk through the waiver requests that we did make.
I'm in your way, Kevin.
Thank you. So, um, so again, Kevin Soli, for the record, office located at five one Main Street here in Monroe, licensed professional engineer on behalf of the applicant. So we're here to talk about essentially the re-tenanting of an existing building, just to orient everyone. The site's located at five eighty Pepper Street. So here's an area of the town of Monroe. Route twenty-five runs north-south. This is on the north end of Pepper Street where it intersects with twenty-five. It's one of the first buildings that you actually see on your left-hand side once you turn onto Pepper Street from Route twenty-five. It was previously improved. It's an existing building with industrial uses within it. It was previously used for a warehouse space and we're looking to propose to re-tenant the rear portion of the building to provide space for a manufacturing facility, Milton and Goose, which actually I think we talked to the commission about briefly probably about a month and a half ago. Milton and Goose is a toy manufacturing company who is looking to fuel their growth and expansion as a growing company in Connecticut and establish a new headquarters here in Monroe, which we're very excited about. So there's no proposed activities from the site construction standpoint. We've been able to provide a plan which demonstrates the that the existing plan, the existing site had adequate parking to accommodate the use. We've shown the small portion of the property towards the rear, which would be used for manufacturing to accommodate the proposed tenant. And it's a very straightforward change of use application. I think, you know, because because this is an industrial district and it's a special exception use, it did require a full new special exception permit application, even though we are just simply putting in a new tenant into the existing building. But because of that, we did request a number of waivers that the commission would have to to agree, just because we wanted to minimize and limit our efforts from a submission standpoint. So we did request a waiver for an existing condition survey, detailed site plan in section seven point three point one E two, grading utility stormwater plan. Again, there's no activity proposed, erosion sediment control plan, lighting plan, any discussion on signs, landscaping, architectural elevations, or other data which the commission could could deem as necessary to process the application. Again, you know, all we're looking to do is to re-tenant the rear portion of the building with the manufacturing use. And we've been able to demonstrate that it complies with all other zoning requirements from a parking standpoint and things like that. So with that, you know, happy to answer any questions the commission may have, but we would request approval at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Soli. We're going to go to the commissioners for comments. And please indicate if you are willing to grant the waivers also. Start with Commissioner Lupo.
Hi, thank you, Kevin, for your presentation. I don't have any questions at this time, and I would be willing to approve the waivers.
Thank you. Commissioner Panici?
Yeah, also no question after the presentation, and I would grant the waivers.
Commissioner Westland?
I also will be willing to grant the waivers. I like this type of business for Monroe. We need this. About how many jobs will this bring to town?
Let's see if we can include that in our narrative. You know, they're they're a growing company, which is exciting. Right now, they're they're, all their toys are manufactured in kind of different locations spread out throughout the region. So bringing them everyone here to town is basically creating an opportunity to do that here and also support that growth. I'm not sure the exact employee count, but I know it's probably going to be, but I know it'll grow as the business grows.
Are they direct shippers, Mr. Soli, or do they they ship to distributors? Do you know?
I believe this is actually a, it would be a manufacturing facility and they would direct ship from here. That's all I have.
Commissioner Ambrosi?
No, I have no questions and I've agreed to grant the waivers.
Commissioner Condon?
No questions and okay with the waivers.
Commissioner Mayne?
I, yes, for this kind of use, I absolutely think we should grant the waivers. I think this is awesome that they can repurpose this building. So, Kev, with the with the granting of the waivers, like, so you don't foresee any any reason that there's there's nothing extra added to it, right? Like, there's not going to be all of a sudden five hundred employees in there or or any of that kind of stuff, right? It's just pretty, you're just, you're just going to swap out the business that was there for this. It's kind of going to be along the same lines, right?
Exactly, yeah. There wouldn't be a big influx of, you know, traffic or anything like that. And there's more than adequate parking on site to accommodate what the intended uses. So there wouldn't be any kind of adverse impact to anything with with granting this this use in the in the building.
Okay, that's just, that's just my main concern. But yeah, I'm all for granting the waivers. Thank you, Kev.
Thank you.
Thank you. Going to go to the public at this point. If there are any members of the public here tonight that would like to comment on this application, please make yourselves known at this time. Once again, if there are any members of the public here tonight that would like to comment on this application, please make yourselves known. Hearing none, then we'll hand it back to Mr. Soli.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a quick report.
Oh, go ahead, Rick.
Yeah, the submitted application has been determined to be complete. Application did not require referral to the ARB as no exterior changes are requested. The Inland Wetlands agent has determined there are no regulated activities associated with this application. Application was referred to the Aquarium Water Company as the property is located in the west aquatic watershed. The proposed occupancy of the building will consist of eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-one square feet for manufacturing, five thousand sixty-three square feet of warehousing space, and six thousand four hundred and thirty-four square feet of office. Adequate existing onsite parking and loading areas are provided for the employees and shipping receiving. Five, the building is currently served by public water and private subsurface septic system. Health department has reviewed the proposal and has no comments. Six, there are no exterior changes to the building, site lighting or property changes associated with this application. Seven, the town engineer has no comments regarding the change of use and finds the existing stormwater management system adequate. Eight, the existing ground sign will be used for the new tenant. And nine, the requested nine waiver waivers request are recognized as minor and are recommended for approval. That is all.
Okay, then back to Mr. Soli for closing statements.
We just, we greatly appreciate the commission's consideration. We think this is a great use for the building. And we respectfully request approval. Thank you very much.
All right, then we'll hereby close this hearing. Next on the agenda, number ten is pending meeting minutes from February the fourth.
Mr. Chairman, we actually haven't distributed those yet, so we will push that to the next meeting.
Okay. Then we have number eleven on the agenda, a CGS eight dash seven D referral from the town of Trumbull. Rick, do you want to review that briefly for the commissioners?
Yep, Mr. Chairman. This is the mixed-use application on Main Street. This is the Trumbull portion of the property, and what they are proposing is to extend the Long Hill Green zoning technique up to this site. And that zoning technique that will be used will complement Monroe's mixed-use regulations that we recently adopted. So the project is moving forward. This is the referral to the town of Monroe from the town of Trumbull. And the regulation in their town has worked well. We have reported on the Long Hill Green mixed-use. It's worked well. I talked to the staff again this week, and the occupancy has been very strong there, and they look forward to this project.
Thank you, Rick. I think I'll poll the commissioners for any comment. Commissioner Mayne?
No comment.
Condon?
No comment.
Ambrosi?
No comments.
Westland?
No comment.
Panici?
No comment.
And Lupo?
No comment, no questions.
O'Reilly, no comment as well. So anything else we need to do on that, Rick?
No, I'll let the town of Trumbull know that the commission received it and so noted the comments.
Okay, next we have bond release, five hundred Pepper Street, Caruba Flavors. Let me just find that. I have a letter from Solely Engineering dated February the twelfth, a request for a bond release in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars. And I have the bond release report from Scott Schatz's line. And apparently, the work on the punchless remains to be addressed. Final course of pavement on, for all onsite parking and access area is not installed. And pavement line striping on final course of pavement is not provided. And he's not recommending a bond release at this time. So any questions on this from the, I think there was another bond release on that property, wasn't there, Rick?
Yeah, I think the Wetlands.
Mr. Chairman, there's also a second request. It has to do with the job site trailer. I believe it's for a thousand dollars.
That's what I'm talking about. Here it is. I have a second letter from Solely Engineering requesting a one thousand dollar bond release at the same property because no trail has remained on the site. So it looks like Scott is not recommending the thirty five thousand dollar bond to be released, but it looks like the one thousand dollar bond can be released. Am I right on that, Rick?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The final C O was issued on that project.
All right, do we need to vote on that?
Yeah, a motion to accept the release of the one thousand dollar bond.
All right, the chair will entertain a motion for the one thousand dollar bond.
I make a motion to release the thousand dollar bond.
Have a motion, maybe a second.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. I'll poll the commissioners. Lupo? Chairman?
Nicole can vote.
Yeah, I don't think I can vote.
On a bond release, okay. Is that correct, Rick?
Yes, she's not sitting.
Okay, then we'll go to Commissioner Westland. Westland, yes. Ambrosi?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Mayne?
Yes.
O'Reilly, yes. Second part of the bond release, this is for a thirty-five thousand dollar bond release, which the chair will accept a motion to deny the bond release.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Mr. Soli?
My apologies. I guess I'd only request that perhaps if staff provide copies of those bond reports from or to the applicant from staff. I think there might be some confusion. The final course of pavement has been installed and final striping has been installed. We actually have pictures of the same, so I'm not exactly sure. And I don't think we, my office has heard anything from Scott saying that it wasn't installed. So I guess I'm just confused.
All right, so you want to hold off on that until the next meeting?
Hey, Mike, it's Bruno. I was actually going to say that I drove by it, you know, and it looked like it was all done. So I didn't understand that either. Can we push this off to the March fourth and just get final confirmation on that? I mean, just visually, obviously, I didn't do an inspection, but visually can, I mean, I thought I saw it. Can we push that to the March fourth and get confirmation on everything?
Absolutely. Unfortunately, I didn't go to the site. This is one site I didn't go to, but the final C O was issued.
All right, the bond release letter from Scott was dated February the eleventh. But I mean, I don't think there was, there hasn't been any paving since then.
Well, the plants are closed for paving.
Yeah, I know. The paving took place before then, so I'm not sure that's confusion. And we haven't heard anything from Scott.
Yeah.
Kevin, is there, Kevin, is there a way that your client can send a receipt or something to the, from the paving company, just to?
Oh, yeah, certainly.
We'll check it out tomorrow. I'll check that out tomorrow.
I mean, there's a, there's, you know, it did snow today. So, I mean, you guys are going to go out there with with shovels and stuff and check it out?
No, they're, I mean, they're maintaining the property. So you can tell right away.
Okay, as long as you guys.
We're occupying the property now.
Oh, okay. I thought you were going to go there with a shovel.
Rick and I.
And push it around.
Rick and I can work with Scott, make sure that he goes out and does a new inspection prior to the next meeting, and we'll make sure that whatever is corresponded with Kevin, so that everyone's in the loop.
Thank you. We'll move on to pending applications, deliberations and determinations, number thirteen. So we have a number of deliberations tonight. Now, for these deliberations, we have the seated members of the commission on all of them only. So the first one, we have R A twenty twenty dash oh four and Z C A twenty twenty dash oh three. These are the proposed Stevenson lumber S B two district text amendment and the proposed Stevens lumber redevelopment master plan. We talked about this at our last meeting and we directed staff to draft an approval with conditions, major, the main condition being not to allow the commercial parking. Rick, can you review those two approvals for us?
Oh, absolutely. Okay, as the chairman indicated, this is both a text amendment and zone boundary change for a property identified as the former Stevenson lumber property. The, the petition is of, is from the Kimball Family Investment LLC. And it affects fifteen eighty-five Monroe Turnpike. And the application was referred to the Connecticut Metropolitan Council of Governments, Norfolk Valley Council of Governments, Western Connecticut Council of Governments. All of them responded, no regional significance. The following correspondence were received for the record from the town of Newtown. They recommended rejection of the entire zoning amendment. The Putituck Watershed Council recommended rejection of zoning amendment. Trail Unlimited Candlewood Valley recommended eliminating commercial parking facility. The zoning actions were referred to the Monroe Health Department, to which no comments were received. Application was filed with the Monroe Town Clerk. Legal notice was published in the voices on October twenty first and the twenty eighth, twenty twenty. The commission considered the proposed text amendment at a duly noticed public hearing at December third, twenty twenty, and closed it on January seventh. The zone boundary change map was opened on December third, twenty twenty and closed on January twenty first. The public hearing was sent to a budding property owners within five hundred feet. Commission did receive written and verbal comments, support, both supporting and objecting to the zoning actions. And the commission, upon its deliberation, directed staff to write a favorable resolution with the following stipulations. The elimination of the commercial parking facility use as identified as new subsection P and the text amendments. And the master plan shall be revised by eliminating the reference to the commercial parking facility. So we need a motion and a second. And the commission's reasons for approving the action are as follows. The zoning actions will not alter or have a negative traffic impact to the existing infrastructure, nor will it adversely impact neighboring properties. The zoning actions are consistent with the plan of conservation and development whereby promoting economic development. And the zoning actions will allow for the productive reuse of the former Stevenson lumber facility with the noted elimination of the commercial parking facility. So, Mr. Chairman, we're ready for a motion and a second and then a roll call vote.
Do we need to do them separately?
No, everything is combined. It's noted as the the actions of the commission.
All right, the chair will entertain a motion to accept the regulation text amendment and the zone boundary change as drafted.
I'll make a motion to accept.
I have a motion, need a second.
I second.
I have a motion and a second, we'll call the roll. Westland?
Westland, yes.
And Rosie?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Maiene?
No.
O'Reilly, yes. The yeses carry. We will prove the motion. Uh, second pending application is R A A twenty twenty dash oh seven and Z C A twenty twenty dash oh four. These are the elderly affordable housing text amendment and the zone change to allow the B two to the new A H affordable housing district. At the last meeting, we directed staff to draft a approval of the zone change and the text amendment. Rick, can you summarize the approvals?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. As stated, this is both for the zoning regulation text amendment and the zone boundary change. Hereafter called the zoning action of the commission. This is the petition of the Connecticut Housing Partners, proposed zoning text amendment by adding new language to establish new district titled Affordable Housing District, which will enable the development of affordable housing development in accordance with Connecticut General Statute eight dash thirty G for senior housing for occupants aged sixty-two years of age or older. Uh, property restricted to Main Street Route twenty-five within a business B two district, which properties located no less than fifteen hundred feet of the intersection of Main Street and Judd Road, served by public water. The, uh, the location of the zone change is identified as one ninety-five Main Street, two oh one Main Street and two eleven Main Street. All located in the B one zone. The petition was referred to the Connecticut Metropolitan Council of Government. They responded, no significant regional significance. Norfolk Valley Council of Governments, no regional significance. And Western Connecticut Council of Governments. And the proposal has no regional significance. The petition was notified in a timely manner and the voices. And the application was referred to the Commissioner of Public Health and the Aquarium Water Company, to which no responses were received. Application was filed with the Monroe Town Clerk. The commission considered the proposed zoning actions currently at a duly noticed public hearing, opened on January twenty first, twenty twenty-one and closed on February fourth, twenty twenty. At this time, interested persons were afforded an opportunity to be heard. The public hearing was set to a budding property owners as recognized by the record. The commission did not receive any written or verbal comments or objections to the zoning action. When the commission act on it, the following reasons are noted for their action. The zoning actions will not change or diminish any partial street furniture, lot access or other existing lot condition. The zoning actions will not alter or have a negative traffic impact to the existing infrastructure, nor will it adversely impact neighboring properties. The zoning actions are consistent with the plan of conservation and development whereby promoting affordable housing in accordance with Connecticut General Statute eight dash thirty G. And the zoning actions will provide much-needed seat for housing for the community and region. With that, Mr. Chairman, we need a motion and a second and a roll call vote.
Thank you, Rick. The chair will entertain a motion to accept the drafted approval of the text amendment and the boundary change.
I'll motion to accept.
Okay.
And have a motion?
I want the second.
And I have motion and a second and we'll call the roll. Westland?
Westland, yes.
And Rosie?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Maiene?
Yes.
And O'Reilly, yes. The eyes have it, five to zero. The next item on the agenda is S T P twenty twenty dash oh five, file number one four five, which is one ninety-five two oh one and two eleven Main Street. We deliberated on this proposal at our last meeting. And
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we need to table until after the effective date of the text amendment and zone boundary, so we'll take this up at the March fourth meeting.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is Z C A twenty twenty dash oh five, file number one oh one eight D five Victoria Drive. This is the I one and I three to B two district. So this is the zone boundary change that we talked about last meeting. Here we do have an approval drafted. We directed staff to draft an approval. Rick, can you go over the approval briefly?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is the petition of Victoria Drive Associates for a proposed zone boundary map change, rezoning of existing I one and I two district parcels identified as five Victoria Drive, located west of the intersection of Main Street Route twenty-five. A copy of the proposed zone change was sent to the parcel owners required to be notified. Notice of the proposed zoning actions were referred and received acknowledged from the Connecticut Metropolitan Council of Governments, who responded, no regional significance. Norfolk Valley Council of Governments responding, no regional significance. And the town of Trumbull, no response. Copy of the zoning actions were filed with the Monroe Town Clerk. Notice of the public hearing was published in the voices on January twentieth and twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one. And the commission concurrently held a public hearing and closed it on October, excuse me, on February, February fourth of twenty twenty-one, at which time interested persons were afforded an opportunity to be heard. And as indicated, the petition was sent to a budding property owners. And there were no written or verbal comments objecting to the zoning actions. After the commission takes a motion to approve it, the following reasons are noted for the set approval. The zoning action will not change or diminish any partial street furniture, lot access or other existing lot condition. The zoning action will not alter or increase traffic to or serving the subject parcel, nor will it adversely impact neighboring properties. The zoning action is consistent with the other B two zone lands to the west, thereby providing increased area uniformity. The zoning action is consistent with the plan of conservation and development, recommending the promotion, promotion of economic growth in the area. A motion and seconded is now warranted and roll call vote.
Chair will entertain a motion to approve the zone boundary change, which will be effective February the twenty-sixth.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second. Chair will call the roll. Westland?
Westland, yes.
And Rosie?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Maiene?
Yes.
O'Reilly, yes. The eyes have it. We have approved the zone boundary change. I would like to deliberate on the three public hearings that we heard tonight and closed. Once again, deliberation on these three hearings will be limited to the seated members of the commission. Let's first do Mr. Ante's application, since he's been patiently waiting. This is S E P twenty twenty-one dash oh three, which is seventy-four Enterprise Drive. This is special exemption permit application for the proposed second phase of construction of building expansion site improvements and proposed uses pursuant to the previously approved S E P. The property located at seventy-four Enterprise Drive. Okay, so we will deliberate on this and start with Commissioner Westland. Do you have any comments, questions, and would you like to move on to and direct the staff to, to draft an approval?
I'd like to direct staff to draft an approval.
Mr. Chairman, if I can add something?
Go ahead.
This is for the seventy-four Enterprise Drive?
Yes.
Yeah, I, if the commissioner feels comfortable, I have the draft motion if you want to move forward, but it's your call. Insofar as the wetlands has approved it.
All right, well, then we'll make that part of our deliberation. So going back to the Rob, is, do you feel comfortable with that?
I am comfortable.
Uh, let's go to Leon and Rosie.
I like to see the approval first, but I'm okay with it too, as long as Rick reads it out.
Okay, Commissioner Condon?
Yeah, I, I do recall the earlier issues we've had with this property. I was also actually on the commission at the time. I think I just started. And it does look like a lot of work has gone into it and that they have worked with staff to kind of bring it up to speed. And I'd be really pleased to see it develop, so I'd be excited to see it move forward.
Commissioner Maiene?
Yes.
And I myself would like to, I agree completely with Ryan. I've been on this commission when we discussed this property in the past, and I'm glad that it's moving forward. So I would like to also approve this draft approval. If you would go ahead, Rick, and read it for us or surmise it, I will vote on.
Okay, for application, S E P twenty twenty-one dash oh three, file number one six two eight A. Property address, description, seventy-four Enterprise Drive, S E P Phase Two. Be resolved at the Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission. That the S E P for Phase Two for planning and zoning application, S E P twenty twenty-one, as described in plans entitled seventy-four Enterprise Drive, with be approved with the following standing conditions. The existing bond be maintained, there is an existing bond on the property. And subject to the following special conditions, adherence to the inland wetlands, conditions of approval. And be it further resolved by the commission in accordance with the application. That the application is consistent with the plan of conservation and development. The, the new building will be dark sky compliant. The design of the proposed action has been incorporated with the comments and recommendation of town staff and required agencies. Be it further resolved. And this is where the commission takes action. A motion and a second to approve it with the submission of final plans, including signature block. Each sheet shall be signed and sealed, two endorsement of final plans, three, prior to issuance of zoning and building permits, that the applicant be responsible for the procurement of all applicable town, state and federal permits. Four, construction details and five, project completion and release of bond procedure. So a motion is in order and a second and then a roll call, Mr. Chairman.
Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Enterprise Drive.
Motion to approve seventy-four Enterprise Drive.
I have a motion and need a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. We'll call the roll. Westland?
Westland, yes.
And Rosie?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Maiene?
Yes.
O'Reilly, yes. Yes, is have it five to zero. The next item on the agenda for deliberation is the S E P twenty twenty-one dash oh two. This is ninety-eight Enterprise Drive, which we heard tonight. Rick, do you have a draft approval of this or?
Yes, I'm using the same form. If the commission feels comfortable tonight, I'll, I'll read, I'll give a summary if you're sorry.
So let's deliberate first on this ninety-eight Enterprise Drive. This is the new construction of the nine thousand foot square building, the parking lot, the small outdoor storage and the site improvements, site improvements that we saw. the small outdoor storage and the site improvements, site improvements that we saw tonight. It's a bond of $32,000. All comments have been addressed as far as I can tell by the staff and from the staff and from the engineer. So any comments, questions, or if you're leaning towards directing, well, any comments or questions, and then we'll go, we'll start with Commissioner Westland.
No, I'm moving for a approval on this, on this project.
Ambrosi? Any comments?
I, I, I personally myself want, want to see it this, this in, in a hard copy before I approve this because this property has been approved before for a building and it was never built. And it had numerous violations for years. And so I want to make sure that this is, this project is going to get done. Because the last time it, am I right, Rick? Wasn't there approval for a building that never got built?
That's correct. It has since elapsed, so. Prepare it for the March 4th, your call.
Yeah, well, I say, Rick, how come we don't get that kind of information in our packet?
Oh, because I, I was concentrating on all these other applications. This one.
I don't want to, I, I really don't want to have an application when I know that this property had numerous violations on it and that we tried to get this, this property to come into compliance a long time ago. And if we don't have that information, and I don't want it at the 10th hour of like yesterday, that I, I get this stuff, I don't, I don't want to get that. And I, I don't, I want to be prepared. You know, we all have jobs and we, we spend as much time as we can on this, on this information. And without that material coming in front of us, we, we have no, I, I'm sure that none of the other commissioners knew that there had been a ton of violations on this property for years. And so, I mean, we need to, to get, get in order here so that we have this stuff in front of us.
No, you're absolutely right, Leon. And so I agree with you to table it, direct staff to write a formal resolution for the March 4th because there's a lot of description that needs to be included.
Here from the other.
I have a comment on this also.
Maiene, go ahead.
Yeah. Like, I definitely agree with Leon. But a part of me also says if the violations have been taken care of, it's a new application with a new building. I just, I don't know, I don't actually have a problem with, with approving everything tonight. Now listen, if we do it, if we do it, we don't, it doesn't matter, it'll get done in two weeks. But generally, if all the violations have been taken care of, if I knew there were violations or not, they were all taken care of. And if there's a new building and we just approved one and got the letter out. I mean, I'm not, I'm not overly against it, but we can do this one March 4th if everyone else really wants to, it's fine with me.
Yeah, I, I, I agree in this instance, Mr. Chairman, for staff to put in all the background information.
Commissioner Condon, I haven't heard from you.
Yeah, I want to move forward with an approval. It doesn't sound like it's going to happen today, so I'm okay with waiting until March.
All right, since it is a somewhat complicated issue, it is a new building, it has previous violations. Then we will direct the staff to draw up a written approval that we can review at our next meeting. The last item is SCP 2021 dash oh four. This is the 580 Pepper Street. This is an SCP use, it's just a change of use to accommodate the Wood Toy Manufacturing Tenant at 580 Pepper Street. This includes nine waivers, which commissioners indicated that they would approve. Now, Rick, do you have a written draft approval?
Yes, I guess.
All right, so.
Let me give a summary of it.
All right, and then we'll deliberate on it.
This is for SCP 2021 oh four, file 16298, special exception permit for manufacturing use. 580 Pepper Street, applicant solely engineering property owner, Robert Malin, revocable trust. Whereas the Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission has considered an SCP application seeking approval for the following special exception permit for manufacturing use. Whereas the change of use requires permission approval for an SCP. Whereas the subject property consists of approximately 5.4 acres, is located in the northeast side of Pepper Street within an industrial I two, and is fully developed with a single story industrial building with support parking and loading. During the review, the applicant, the commission noted the following. The site is located within the West Plank River watershed for which the applicant completed required notices to the Commission of Public Health and Aquarium and Water Company of Connecticut. The site is not located within 500 feet of a town boundary or within a map floodplain. There are no inland wetland regulated activities associated with this application. The site is not subject to a conservation easement or other restrictive covenant. Site access is existing and provided via Pepper Street with access driveway and is not proposed to be altered. Site is served by public water, natural gas connection, and an onsite individual subsurface septic system whereby no changes to these utilities are proposed. The commission considered the proposed application at a duly noticed public hearing, which was open and closed in February 18th, 2021. Notice of the public hearing was filed in Monroe Town Clerk's office and published in Voices. Property hearing notices were sent to a property owners within 100 feet. And the proposal seeks approval to permit the change of use from warehousing to manufacturing requiring special except permit within the I two district, hours of operation of all site uses will generally be similar. Site access will remain as located and configured with the original approval of the premises. Off-street parking, loading, site utilities, lighting, drainage, and landscaping improvements are all in compliance with the zoning standards. The proposed action is consistent with the plan of conservation and development. All activities will be confined to the inside of the existing building. No new signage is proposed. Existing subsurface sanitary system and public water facilities will remain in effect. Existing off-street parking and loading will be provided in compliance with applicable standards. The commission agrees to the nine waivers as noted. And if the commission makes a motion to approve it and a second it, the reasons for approval are that the application complies with the with the plan of conservation and development in that there are no exterior modifications. So a motion and second is in order, and then a roll call vote, Mr. Chairman.
All right, before we do that, are there any comments or questions from any of the commissioners before we take a motion? If not, the chair will entertain a motion to approve SCP 2020 correction, CP 2021 dash oh four, 580 Pepper Street, it's a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve SCP 2021 dash oh four, file number 1629A.
A motion and need a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, we'll call the roll. Westland?
Westland, yes.
Ambrosi?
Yes.
Condon? Was that a yes?
It was.
Yes. O'Reilly, yes. The yeses, the eyes have it five to oh. I think that's it for deliberations, did I miss anything?
No, we have quite a bit, Chairman.
All right. So next on the agenda, my item 14 is Regulation Review Amendment Work Session. I contacted the members of the regulation subcommittee, and everyone seemed to be available on Monday at 5:30. Does that work for you? Where are you? Rick?
Yep, that works for me. Does someone have that date, is that February 20?
Monday?
22nd.
Thank you. 30, okay.
Okay, we do, do we have any correspondence, Georgia, that we haven't already reviewed?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay. Chairman's report. So I don't know how many of you know about desegregate Connecticut? But there is a move in Connecticut to, and there was a commission hearing on the, today at Hartford, which I attended virtually by way of Zoom for a couple of proposed laws that would allow the state to come in. And pretty much when it comes to affordable housing or low income housing, completely bypassed the planning and zoning process. If not completely bypassed the process, then at least do away with the public hearings. So there are a lot of people in Connecticut that are interested in doing this. They claim that 145 of the towns out of the 169 in Connecticut have purposely denied apartments and multifamily housing units in order to keep certain members of the population out of their towns. So this is a, a serious proposal, and a lot of the commissioners on the, I think it's the, the housing, the housing commission, the housing commission in Hartford are in favor of this, of these new laws. So I just wanted to let you all know that we are working towards the 10% affordable housing compliance that's required by the law that was set forth, I think it was about 10 or 20 years ago. It didn't have much effect because obviously 145 towns still are not compliant. But we, we are making progress towards compliance, especially with the, the low income housing project we approved tonight with, and with the mixed use, which we're requiring 10% to be affordable. So I just wanted to let you all know that I don't know if this is going to come to pass. I'm not sure if they continued the hearing, but after four hours I left, there were still about 100 people that wanted to speak. Speakers were split, half for and half against.
Mr. Chairman, can I add something to that?
Yep, all right, yes.
I am also aware of that movement. And this is very severe and radical. It really, it really shows the importance of what you are doing right now with your P O C D update. You are recognizing and you are putting in your plan, as you did 10 years ago, an affordable housing section. You are, however, adding a lot more language to it and recognition. So this is something that's very good that we're doing. Francisco is aware of this desegregation Connecticut. And I have been talking with him. As the commission is aware, all the 169 towns have to prepare an affordable housing plan by 2022. When we adopt the P O C D update in March, one of the next steps is to formulate that opens the affordable housing plan. We want to have that ready because 2020 is right down the road. But we will have the language in our plan that will support because we are recognizing areas in town, and that's what that affordable housing plan wants to do. They just don't want you to say we support affordable housing. They want you to show it in areas within your community. So it's one step closer to showing where you want to put these type of facilities. So this leads me to giving, well, Mr. Chairman, did you want to add any more to your report because I'll, I'll get into it in my.
I just want everybody to look up desegregate Connecticut. They have a website and just, I mean, they are very radical in what they want to do. So inform yourselves about, on this topic. That's all I have to say about it. Rick, you have anything else to add?
Well, yeah, going to the land use staff report. As, as you know, we're moving ahead with the draft. Francisco will be distributing that as early as next week. We have to stay on track and move forward, so I'll be distributing that to the commissioners. Does that, does anyone want a hard copy along with the electronic version? So you can have both, or what's your preference?
I'm good with just a digital copy.
Okay.
Electronic.
All right. So we are moving forward on that, and as I just reported, we need, you need to focus on the affordable, the housing component part, which deals with the affordable housing. And lastly, the commissioners, all of the commissioners received a staff report on the final CEO for the Noble Gas Station.
Yes.
This is the procedure that staff report on at the last subcommittee that will, will be doing it this way. All of the issues were minor. Wetlands signed off on it, engineering signed off it, on it. And the CEO and I went to the site, they were all minor. There was just one minor workmanship related issue regarding the height of the asphalt pavement and how it matched the concrete sidewalk. The owner of the property is aware of it, he's going to address it and mill it down in the spring. Also, I had a chance to talk to Leon. We need to keep the front walkway clean of merchandise. They started selling firewood because of the temperatures, and that's, that's a hot retail item. They are going to finish selling it and everything will be restricted in the future. If they want to sell the firewood in the bundles, they have to store it within the building. And I also have some good news with the propane tank. They found an alternative location. But you still have to amend your regulations because outside, outside display of merchandise is currently prohibited in all the commercial zones. So that, that is a text amendment that the commission has to undo before you review the propane cage. So good news on that, Leon, I, I just found out that today that they're, they found an alternative location that I think you'll find acceptable. So the Noble Gas Station has received its final CEO, they had a conditional when they opened right before Thanksgiving, and their bond was released. So hopefully the commissioner feels comfortable with how staff dealt with it. And we recommend that you go to the site and check it out if you haven't done so.
What else is moving forward with the rest of that property?
We are getting indications that the next development is moving forward by Mike Chanel, the property owner. And we will be reporting. And we will be reporting to the commission probably as early as March, March 4th.
Okay. Thank you, Rick. Any of the commissioners have anything that's on their mind?
Oh, Ryan, did you want to report on the EMS?
I really don't know as much as Rob and Dominic would probably know since they're on the building committee for that. I'm just a, someone that wants to hang out in the building.
Yeah, I meant to say, Rob, yeah, because it was received, yep.
Yeah, we received 98 bids, which were read off the other night. And we're currently in the process of the construction manager is putting together his report, which we're going to review. It's going to get passed along to council and it's going to go in front of the town. We're trying, we're, we're hoping, you know, optimistically hopeful on breaking ground towards the, the end of the spring, early summer. I know we've, we've set dates before, but different obstacles have come up. We are moving forward and, and looking at the bids, we're even more optimistic.
Yeah, Rob covered it. Basically what happened. We are.
All right.
We get.
Yeah, it's good news, gentlemen.
Dominic, you're breaking up there.
No, I said, Rob covered it. Basically, we opened the bidding last night. We're moving forward and as we get the funding, we'll probably get going. The structure manager is going to put the package together of all the bids and report back. Put them in proper order.
All right. So there'll probably be a public hearing on bonding for that, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
All right, anything else on anyone's minds that they would like to talk about? If not, great job, everyone. We did a lot of business tonight. Thank you all and we'll see some of you in person on Monday.
Motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
Stay safe and stay out of the snow.
Have a good night, guys.